Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 18, 2020. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you go get Reed?
Does he have to do the pledge of allegiance by himself?
Roll call, please. I'll say it slow.
Okay. Albertson. Yes, we are.
Here.
Okay. Bueller. Okay. I know, you were waiting. I know. Hoyer.
Here.
We'll just skip Lalum.
Lalum, I'm here.
Okay. Manti.
Here.
Okay. Rademski.
What was the question?
Are you present? Roby.
Here.
Okay. Vilhauer.
I'm here.
Y absent. Holene.
Here.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Lalum and a second by Manti. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item E is public comment. This is a time for anyone to come forward if they'd like to speak about something, particularly not on the agenda. See no one, we'll move to item F, approval of the agenda. Have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Roby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. First item on the regular agenda is the second reading of ordinance number 2-06, a zoning text amendment to chapter 21.76, Campgrounds of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Watertown. Look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lalum. Second by Manti. And before I open the public hearing, I'd ask the Public Works Director to give us a brief summary.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a section of the zoning ordinance. Chapter 21 is the city's zoning code. And in chapter 21, we have a specific section related to campgrounds and their use within the city. I would call it kind of a list of design standards, really, and regulations specific to campgrounds. So in the recent past, it's been brought to our attention that some of that language, you know, could be looked at as we do with our zoning ordinances from time to time, just to see what the language includes and the applicability of where we're at today in the community, on how we utilize these sections of our zoning code. And this was one that was brought to light that looked like it needed some updates. And so we've staffed, the urban planner, Brandy Hampton, has worked hard on putting together an amendment to this section of the zoning ordinance that we think helps address some of the talking points that we've worked through with the Plan Commission, and some of which were shared during the first reading. But Ms. Hampton's here again this evening. If we have any detailed questions that need answered, I'd lean into her to help talk through that and help with any of the discussion.
All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this item? So please come forward and say your name for the record.
Conda Williams. I had a friend call this morning, and we were visiting, and he said, "This project is beyond my backyard." I have to say that also. This project is beyond my backyard. It'll be a lesson learned. What is best for the lake, present and future? Lake residents, lake quality. We are not in the game of entertainment. At stake shouldn't be how much developers or city taxes make. At stake is, what are you and I doing for God's gift to us? This is beyond us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mike Lawrence, I work with Bob Drake, and we are working on coming up with a campground that has been approved on the west, I guess it'd be the north, north part of the lake, I guess. And we kind of want to do more of a long-term campground where people can come out there season-long, move their camper in place, kind of more of like a park model. They have them in Madison. They have three at Detroit Lakes. They have them, I mean, they're fairly common. Actually, up by, I think it's, Ortonville has one. And these types of things have clubhouses, they have pools, they have amenities, they have parks. And it kind of gaps the ownership of a lake home versus, you know, 300. To get onto Lake Compesca, there's a huge barrier. It's a $350,000 barrier, which knocks a lot of families out. What we're looking to do is bring that barrier down and give them somewhere where they can go for the season and still have that same accessibility through public landings, give them amenities that actually the lake people don't even have. You know, we are looking into a pool, we're looking into a clubhouse, we're looking into parks, places. The one, you know, that people always say, "Well, I don't want it to turn into Ponson." Well, that's an actual trailer court. You know, that's the difference. If you drive by the ones in Madison, you drive by the ones up by Ortonville, the Big Stone, I mean, they're nice. And people take pride in that. They're out there, you tend to have better people coming in that, you know the people. You start talking to them on the bike path. The neighborhood kind of embraces these things, rather than, you know, somebody like City Park where you come in for three days, and then you leave and you never see those people ever again, or they're coming for a short period of time. I mean, the campground we have the most issues with is a short-term, non-reservation campground. And the other ones, we have a lot less issues. So that's kind of what we're doing, and that's kind of how I got involved and brought this up. And there is campgrounds now on the lake that do have season-long things. So just trying to make it a level playing field.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? See none, I will close the public hearing and entertain some discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could address one of Mr. Lawrence's comments there, there's really two primary changes in this section of the ordinance. One of them pertains to the length of stay, like Mike spoke to. The current ordinance reads that no campground may be occupied by the same person or persons for more than 30 days in one calendar year. The proposed amendment, this is before the council tonight, should they approve this, will state that campsites shall only be occupied by any one individual for temporary seasonal stays, and no individual's occupancy at a campground shall exceed 180 days in any one calendar year. So that's one of the primary changes we're making, that's proposed to be made here, is we're going from a 30-day maximum stay to 180-day maximum stay. And then the other one is, part eight of this code is being struck completely because we felt it was a little bit repetitive. We've conferred with the city attorney on its, it's more or less stating that "All special permits issued under this section are temporarily invalid only during the period of the campground and associated facilities comply with the provisions." We all felt that goes without saying with any of our city ordinances that if there are non-conformities or non-compliances, there's measures in place to address those issues. So those are the two main changes that are for you tonight. I thought I'd just touch on those briefly.
Thank you. Councilman Roby.
First of all, we're not voting on a particular campground. We're voting on an ordinance change. That's point number one. Point number two is, how does this affect current campgrounds? You know, City Park, Memorial Park, I know there's, they have restrictions. Do they, are they going to keep their restrictions? How is that going to affect existing campgrounds?
Yeah, to that point, Councilman Roby, that's a great question. We have discussed this with the City Park campground managers. Terry Kelly, the acting park and rec director, spoke with us. And Brandy can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they plan to administratively still implement the 30-day limit on the city campground. And I think some of the logic that was discussed at the Planning Commission level and with staff was that because it is a public campground, we felt it was justified in trying to limit that space to see some turnover, to allow others, other community members to utilize that campsite, that campground facility. So I believe they internally, through the park board and the city staff, are going to still administer that 30-day limit. And the others then, of course, would be able to adjust their rules and regulations up to that 180 days, like the ordinance would say.
Right. Apparently, I didn't close the public hearing, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Councilman Hoyer.
I'll just toss out, as someone who grew up in a camping family, a lot of times when, because many campgrounds have that 30-day limit, the way people get around it, you just hop to another campsite, and then you're good to go. Because as long as you change sites, you're within compliance of that. So that's usually how people get around it. But I don't think the 180-days thing is an issue. A lot of grandparents utilize, like, summer-long spots, so they'll come back for the summer, they park their camper, and then they stay long-term so they can spend time with their families, but they don't want to be up here in the winter. So then they take back off, go back to Arizona or Florida, or where have you, the warm places. And yeah, I don't think you're going to see a lot of hurt from this. It's a good measure, the city taking upon themselves with the 30-day at City Park. But again, just so folks understand, like, there are people that still stay 180 days during those seasons, but it's a good measure, because when they do get full, then they can't do that. So yeah, I don't think you're going to see any huge repercussions out of this.
Anyone else? Councilman Lalum.
Heath, as far as infrastructure goes, you know, this 180-days, if they would decide, like, as Mike has alluded, as like a park model style, are we going to require them to put in sewer or septic, or something along those lines, electricity to each individual spot? I mean, no one's going to want to move their, you know, leave it there for 180 days and then decide to go get rid of their waste.
Yeah, I know that's a great question to contemplate, too, as we look ahead on what the campground's functionality might look like. You know, there are certain other design criteria seen in this section here where certain things are required as far as access and camping pad minimum sizes and things like that. Now, as far as the sanitary component goes, I do believe it's the intent of the owner for that particular site that we've referenced here this evening, to put in some permanent sewer service connections that would be permanently there for the campers to utilize. Now, when we review that, we'll have to check that off with all the, you know, the floodplain elevations, how they would or would not accommodate floodwaters. There might be certain limited camping pads in the campground that could utilize those types of full connection services and others that may not be able to. But we will definitely be looking at that when that campground comes in as a submittal for review and making sure that everything's covered in those respects.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get in too much of someone's business model, but I mean, that would be something, if I was looking to put a park-type model there, I mean, that obviously would have to be one to check in the box for me. But, you know, how do we, how do we take care of that as far as the, you know, the cost of that? Are we going to do by individual spots? Are we going to, is it going to be like a holding septic? Something along those, maybe that's too far. It can be a septic, so it'd have to be some sort of a sewer-type system. I mean, maybe that's not part of this one. Maybe it's more just for design.
It really is. It comes down to that design phase, and there is a holding tank or a dump station requirement as well for every campground. Now, if they have full service connections, is that still a requirement? I'd have to look back in the regulations, but I believe we're covered there either way, that there would be some level of service required for the campground to provide as far as disposing of the waste.
But this ordinance revision doesn't touch on any of that.
Correct.
We're just talking about campgrounds in general. Councilman Hoyer.
Well, I'll just toss out, I mean, if, whenever you choose a place that you're going to stay these periods, those campgrounds have those hookups. That's just common sense business model for themselves. So I can just speak from the many campgrounds we've gone to that they have full hookup service at most places that actually offer that. So yeah, I don't think anyone's going to open a campground that doesn't have that kind of hookup if they're expecting these kinds of stays. Otherwise, they'd probably limit how long they're going to let people stay, because the idea of moving your camper that much to go drain, pretty rough. And you'll run out of water within four days anyway, if you're showering in your unit. So just more fact-finding.
Councilman Vilhauer.
I think just to point out, I mean, the water supply, sewage, et cetera, that's already addressed in our current ordinance. So we're not, we're not changing or addressing that. So we've already got some restrictions in place, you know, that hit on some of the things that we're talking about here. So, and I guess I'd just like to point out that this did come through the Planning Commission with a unanimous recommendation on their part at their meeting here recently.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. We have one nay. Do you need a roll call for that, Kristen?
Yes. Okay. Roll call. Albertson.
Yes.
Bueller. Hoyer.
Yes.
Holene. Lalum.
Yes.
Manti. Rademski.
Yes.
Roby. Vilhauer.
Yes.
Y is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two is the first reading of ordinance 20-07, repealing the election by majority requirement for aldermanic and mayoral elections. And this is the first reading, so no action. Matt, will you please explain this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This relates back to the discussion that was originally had at last, the last council meeting, the commission, or the committee meeting prior to the council meeting. What this ordinance change would do essentially is eliminate the requirement for a runoff vote in the camp, in the elections for mayor and city council. And the method that the council had given me the feedback to pursue was essentially just repeal the ordinance, so we would rely on state law. State law simply says that the person having the highest number of votes for the office shall be elected. Any questions? I'm glad to answer them. Excuse me.
Any questions, counsel? Councilman Roby?
I made this comment last time this came up. I think the only downside we have here is if you do happen to have a race where there's 10 people running, and I don't know if that's ever happened in the history of our community, but that's the only downside, Matt. I would ask, just comment on that.
That's absolutely right. Yeah, if you have 10, 10 folks in a race, the winner could, in theory, receive 10.1% or 11% or something like that, and clearly not be the representative of their district or the at-large, depending on which seat it is. You know, one of the, since the last meeting, I did, I had, I saw somebody comment, who happens to be a judge, that the city should consider instant runoff voting, which is done throughout the country in different places. But my interpretation of the statute that that's not currently allowed. But in the event in the future that the statute were to change to allow that, that might be something we could consider, where essentially you'd rank your choices, and then in the event somebody doesn't get a 50% majority, you instantly go to that second choice of those who, whose vote didn't count in the first round. Anyway, long story short, yes, that is certainly possible by just going to the plurality versus the majority.
All right. Councilman Holene.
Are you accepting comments or just questions at this point?
Sure, yes.
Well, and that is a concern, whether, I mean, if you're getting like a lot of people in a race, and you're concerned, does that person then, if they win with 11%, are they actually representing the district? That argument could be made, but I could, I would suggest that argument could be made now in a runoff election. We have so few voters turn out for city elections anyway. If there was a runoff election and there's only 150 people who show up, is that really indicative of the, of that ward as well? So, you know, pick your, pick your choice as far as what's best, and this is far more economical. So that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, good point.
Any other note I would, I would make is that it is the way we select our legislators currently. So it's, you know, it's very in line with the way that's done.
All right. Thank you. All right, item three is authorization for the mayor to sign all necessary documents related to the professional services agreement for an extension of services associated with the Watertown Regional Airport marketing with Arcstar Group in the amount of $42,000 for a 12-month extension.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lalum, and a second by Bueller. And Heath, will you please tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the council may recall, last year, we entered into a contract, an agreement with Arcstar to provide us some professional services. And essentially, what this company does for us is help to develop and market the Watertown Regional Airport and the air service that we provide. That contract last year was executed for a six-month duration, which expired here at the end of January. So Arcstar has, of course, wants to continue their services to the city. That's been contemplated internally by staff, and then subsequently at the airport board level, all of which have recommended continuing these services with Arcstar. Arcstar's fees for this next year, should we choose to approve this contract, are $3,500 per month, and it'd be for a 12-month contract. I thought I'd note some of the general services that Arcstar has provided the city and the Watertown Regional Airport this far. One of the things they've done is they've lobbied for schedule adjustments on our flights and how that best interacts with our flight availability and connecting flights in the airports that we connect to, which I think has been a great benefit for the Watertown users of our airport. They've also negotiated corporate discounts with United Airlines, and then went a step further with that and signed up several new companies to those United loyalty programs, and have done a lot of marketing in those respects as far as drawing new businesses to utilize our regional airport on a regular basis, rather than driving to Sioux Falls or other competitive airports in the region. So I think that some of those majors added up, and then those are just a few of them. They go a long way in the overall effect of having a full-blown regional airport and getting those services promoted out there as much as possible. The contract, like I mentioned, is for 12 months, and it is, we are able to terminate it upon a proper notice provided. I believe that disclosures are most of our contracts like this nature. Mr. Gary Foss wasn't able to be here tonight, and Todd, the airport manager, Todd Siree, is also out on vacation. So I will certainly help answer any questions you might have, and you'll have to forgive me in advance if I don't know the exact answer.
Okay, I see in the letter that we're only paying the base rate. He's offered other services. They're hourly above that. His expenses are above that. Do we expect that he wouldn't be coming out to visit and wouldn't be making any direct sales calls?
I assume that that $3,500 does cover some of those expenses, I guess, if it was my understanding of the contract, Madam Mayor.
Okay, because it says direct sales calls, and sales follow will be billed at $40 per hour. And it also says other expenses related to this agreement will be billed at cost. These include airfare, hotel, meal, rental car, and incidentals. So those aren't figured into the monthly. I would, that's how I would interpret it.
Correct, yeah. And Todd, the airport fund also has professional services line items that I presume some of these extra costs could be covered under if we were, if we were to incur them.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Lalum.
Just a couple of things. It actually does say in the contract that they would be approved by the airport in advance, so they would not be backdated and, hey, we're going to send you a bill. Heath, and I know you're not on the airport, obviously, but do you feel that this company has helped increase our traffic that's coming through the regional airport?
Thank you for asking that, because it reminds me of a note that Todd asked me to pass on. It was last, I forget the exact day, late last week, the airport parking lot was full. There wasn't a free parking space out there, and that's happened, he said, two or three times now since everything's evolved over the past 12 months out at the airport. Now, I can't say that Arcstar is completely responsible for that amount of success at the airport, but I definitely think it's obviously playing a role in that, in the marketing that they're doing and the programs that they're helping us set up.
It does state that we can, with the 60-day notice, we can terminate contracts, so.
Right. Okay, Councilman Vilhauer.
You did say the airport board did approve or did recommend that we approve this.
Yes, and I believe it was not this most recent meeting, but the one prior, where they recommended approval of this contract with Arcstar.
We didn't have anything in writing to put in the agenda.
But we've got good, good people on that board, and I respect their judgment.
Councilman Albertson.
I think that we've had so many things going on negatively out there that if Arcstar is playing a role in that, when we look at the big picture out there, I think it's a good investment for the city to have somebody helping us so we don't struggle and end up in the suit we were before.
Right. Councilman Hoyer.
Again, I'm, I'm fine with us continuing down this path. I think the thing we have to be careful of is when we get fluffy language in reports, like 400,000 impressions were generated. Like, that just means that it was, it passed somebody's screen. It's pretty easy to get 400,000 impressions, speaking as like a social media marketer. But when they talk about their click-through rates far exceeding industry standards, that's something you should be interested in, and that's the kind of data that we should maybe seek to see in the future, because that means they actually click on the ad and they utilize it. So that's, that's good hard data to get. I know they always talk about the nice connections we get through Arcstar. I think those are actually happening, and we've only seen growth, so continue to go down that path. But I'm just saying, be wary of fluffy language when it comes to social marketing. So make sure you get good hard data.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. Oh, Councilman Holene.
Thank you. I just feel like I should chime in. I was at that meeting at the airport board a couple of months ago, and this contract with Arcstar was not just a thing that they wanted. This was the number-one thing that they felt was important for the continuing growth and viability of the airport, especially with the other things that we're discussing. The, it really is, travel really is a consumer-driven market. People will go elsewhere if it's cheaper, and that is their number-one concern. So getting those fares negotiated that Arcstar does, and making sure that we are competitive, is the number-one thing that will, that people will notice. And it's purely anecdotal now in my own situation, but I've flown out of the Watertown Airport several times. And last two flights, I didn't recognize a single person, and I can guarantee you, I know a lot of people in Watertown. So I started talking with people, and there are people coming from Sioux Falls, Fargo. That is purely anecdotal. We have pressed, the airport board has pressed Arcstar for hardcore information. It's kind of tough to get as proof, but we are working on it. I would say the airport board feels very strongly this is very important. I would encourage a yea vote.
Thank you. Councilman Bueller.
I just, I kind of want to reinforce what Reed is saying. As a former member of the airport board, and we've studied this at length in the past, and I would also agree that this is, I think this is a great advantage to Watertown to help develop our airport use.
Thank you. Councilman Hoyer.
I'll just tie back in, too, to actually echo you a little bit, Reed. But I've even had people at our business that aren't from Watertown that something happens with the weather and the flight stops, or they're there before a flight, and, you know, they're shopping locally, too. So it does a lot economically for the entire community. And tons of, tons of people, Aberdeen especially, like to come down and use the Watertown Airport, so.
Right. Have to say that's true. Anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is authorization for the mayor to sign all necessary and future documents related to the professional services agreement associated with the Watertown Regional Airport New Terminal Building Design Bidding and Construction Administration, City Project Number 1927, with Mead &amp; Hunt, Inc., in the amount of $3,185,287. I have a motion by Lalum, and a second by Villahauer. And I will ask Public Works Director Heath Von Ey to give us a rundown on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, one of the first formalities, I guess we could call it, in bringing forth the, into fruition, the new airport terminal building, the site design, and subsequently, of course, the construction of not just the building, but all the civil site work that needs to occur as well. This contract is with Mead &amp; Hunt. They were a design architect and engineering company that was selected some months, some several months back, in preparation for what has now evolved into the FAA earmarking $9 million grant towards the city of Watertown for a regional airport. Some of the, some of the work that Mead &amp; Hunt has done since being selected included a lot of the, the grant preparation, some of the preliminary design work and things of that nature. And we're now on a step in this process with the new airport terminal to enter into a formal contract with them for not only the rest of their design services, but also for their bidding of the project and their construction administration duties to carry out the oversight of the construction once it's bid. This contract is for roughly $3.18 million. It does include all those phases I just mentioned with the design bidding and construction, and portions of this work are grant-eligible and will become reimbursable at the time that we receive bids and get the grant money from the FAA. Generally speaking, this has been reviewed by staff, Todd Sirey, airport manager, and myself. We've had some in-depth conversations with consultants and some of their subconsultants, such as Helms and Associates, who is a civil engineer for Mead &amp; Hunt on this project, and is also our contracted civil engineer for a lot of the airport responsibilities. I've also communicated in depth with Matt Robey, city attorney, has given review of this, Kristen Bobzien, finance officer, on the funding aspects of this and how we cash flow these expenses until we get the grant money. And at this point, we're at a level of comfort to recommend approval of this contract and move forward accordingly with Mead &amp; Hunt. Mitch Walker from Mead &amp; Hunt is here this evening as well, and if you have any questions, him or I could certainly help answer them.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any specific questions that you'd like to ask or comments?
I'd just like to see if we can just kind of do a brief overview on that, Mitch, to kind of go through what the process is and what we're looking at from a city aspect on it.
Absolutely. First off, thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of this really exciting project. The airport's been growing significantly over the course of the last year, and we, we know that the existing terminal building is, is ready for an upgrade. The, we have been a part of this community for now about a year and a half. We were selected as, to put together a terminal area study for the opportunity to seek federal funds in a supplemental grant to provide a new terminal building for the city of Watertown. We completed that, that study about a year ago, and we were notified just late last year, right around November of 2019, that the supplemental funding was provided in the amount of, right around that $9 million that was discussed. So, quickly, we reassembled the design team and started in on the actual design of a terminal facility for the, for the city and the community. Right now, we are just early in the schematic design phase, or finishing out the schematic design phase. Because the, the nature of the, the schedule of this project, the grant funds will be available by the end of this summer, and so it's imperative that we, that we move forward quickly in order to meet the FAA's required timeframes. A lot of, a lot of this is based on FAA's schedule, FAA requirements, and, and how we access grant funds. So, the process will be moving through schematic design this month. We will then start into design development with the city as well, and then construction documents. We will go out for a public bid in July of this year and receive competitive bids in August. Once we have those bids selected, then we will then request grant dollars in that amount from the FAA, and we'll seek that full $9 million that the FAA has allocated.
All right. We talked about the, the total cost of the project, and not to confuse anybody, but this is just the, the beginning. And the, if you could talk a little bit about the total expected costs and the various phases that we'll go through, I think that would be appreciated.
Absolutely, Mayor. So, the terminal building itself is roughly half of the overall contract amount for, for the terminal area program. That is, in the concept budget report, was right around the $20, $21 million number. We're still right around that general area, although some increases due to FAA required relocations of NAVAIDS, weather services, things of that nature, have increased that a little bit. Right now, we are in the process of, of going back and forth with the federal government, the eligibility results for the terminal building, and, and determining that ratio that the, the feds will pay and the, the local sponsor will pay. The process from, for the next two years then will be a design of the terminal building, starting construction of that terminal building, and then focusing in on a significant portion of flatwork or civil projects. That would be the, the entry drive for the airport, the parking lot for the airport, and then what would be called airside, which would be taxi lanes that get aircraft up to the terminal building, and then the aircraft parking apron, which is right adjacent to the proposed terminal. Our subconsultant, Helms Engineering, who is also the airport consultant and runs the program for the airport, is on tap for design of those services into next year. The, the overall goal of this then is to, is to have all those construction projects sort of meet at the end of year 2021, with the opening of the airport terminal, with the, with the apron, entry drive, and all the civil projects completed at that same time.
And so, we have currently word that we receive a $9 million grant if we follow all of the procedures properly, but we won't get it until we actually bid the project out. And so, could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, certainly. So, the, the AIP is what it's called, was, there was an influx in dollars called the, the supplemental funds, to the tune of about a billion dollars in supplemental funding for the aviation. Infrastructure as a whole, what we sought was funding to provide terminal construction. And so, the FAA needs to see actual bid numbers from a competitive bid process in order to actually release those grant funds. Right now, we are appropriated to the amount, we're, we're in the spreadsheet, so to speak, to the amount of right around $9 million. And so, that grant would be issued once competitive bids are in hand.
Thank you. And I have a question, Councilman Lalum? Well, go ahead.
So, we're talking total project, $21 million. The $9 million's what we've been awarded so far. Of that $12 million remaining, are we expecting to get additional grants, or we're putting in for additional grants on that?
Great question. We, so, the FAA has, has set that $9 million for the terminal project itself. We will need to seek additional grant dollars next year, discretionary grant dollars. You know, the good news is, is the FAA largely never completes a project like this and does not, you know, fully complete the necessary projects to make it operable. That's just not something that, that they would do. So, so, our request next year would be the grants for that taxi lane and apron job, and an airport terminal project would not work without the taxi lane and the apron coming to it. So, it's, it's a relative low-risk request or, or grant that we would be requesting for the, from the FAA next year.
So, some of the work is eligible for participation in the grant, and some is not. Is the entry drive, like the front of the terminal, the, what, you have, you have the airplane side and then the whatever, the street side?
That's right, that's right.
The public side, that, is that work eligible?
As the architect, it hurts, it pains me to say that largely all of the flatwork is all eligible, and only when it gets into the building is when we have to fight for eligibility. So, the entry drive, the taxi lane, the apron, parking lot, because that parking lot is non-revenue generating, we're not offering pay parking for that parking lot, then the federal government will pay for that at 100% or basically 90% covered by the FAA, and then 5% covered by the state and 5% by local.
But by the time we apply for the grant for that, that 5% from the state might have dwindled to three and a half, which increases our local costs to six and a half.
That is, that is correct, yep. So, there are, there are a couple of civil projects that will slip into grant year 2021, and unfortunately, state of South Dakota has reduced their state apportionment from 5% down to 3.5% for these types of projects.
With the terminal part, we're, we're good with our 5% from the state, is what we're expecting?
The, for vertical projects, again, the state taps out at 200,000, I believe, for, for their, you know, for, for their part, for their contribution. We have maxed out all state funding for this, and we receive state approval for the maximum dollar amount that they can, once eligibility determinations are, are made sometime next month. So, that was done at the state aviation conference last year, right here in Watertown, in fact.
Right, okay. Other questions, council members? Or comments? Yes, Councilman Villahauer?
Kristen, as, so as I understand, there's going to be some dollars that we've got, we've got a fund upfront. Are you okay and on board with, with what we're doing?
Yeah, the dollars will come out of the capital improvement fund to transfer over to the airport fund. We have some reserve for capital outlay. It's not exactly what was in the plan, but with this project moving itself forward a little bit, we do have some reserve cash that we can use until we're reimbursed with the, the grant funds, so.
And Heath, you had mentioned what the various parties been involved in the, you know, behind-the-scenes negotiation. You, you didn't make reference to airport board members. I'm assuming they've been kept in the loop and are on board with this as well?
Yes, Councilman Villahauer, the airport board, their interactions have been very in-depth from the beginning, back to a year and a half ago when we selected Mead &amp; Hunt on this preliminary phase. They have seen and are knowledgeable with the concept budget report, and in there are the anticipated dollars that would it take, that it would take for us to pay Mead &amp; Hunt. So, they have been on board with those numbers and in approval with those from the concept budget report level.
Councilman Lalum?
Yes, she did say that would be awarded roughly in August.
That's correct.
And we would start construction per FAA requirements pretty much right away?
Yeah, this is, the FAA actually requested, and Heath alluded to this earlier, we, this is a little bit different than normal in that the FAA has actually stated that they want to include all the design and the construction administration, or from the civil side, resident engineering as a part of this contract. So, there does not need to be any sort of lag where we determine, go through contracting again with the FAA or the city. This will take us from start to finish, and, and so, once we get bids in hand, you know, typically, we could wait 90 to 120 days to start construction. Now, you know, we would anticipate starting immediately in the fall, which is great.
Yeah, that's wonderful. All right, other comments, questions? Here we go. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Next item on the agenda is old business, and I know people want to know about the ICE arena. I have no new information to disclose at this time, however, several of these council members have been meeting, meeting, meeting. I think they had four meetings last week, and they're working really hard, so hopefully soon, we'll have something to talk about. Is there any other old business? Councilman Hoyer?
Mayor, I was just wondering, I don't think Brandy's here anymore. Have we heard any more development on the Lake Compeska commercial zoning? Because I know we brought it up at a previous meeting, didn't go forward with it, because we were still in the works on it. I just didn't know if it's actually been moving forward at all.
That's a question for Heath.
Just so I'm clear on your question, Councilman Hoyer, you're wondering about any, the amendment to create a lake commercial district? Is that your question?
I believe so. I don't know that if it was an amendment, it was a totally new.
Yes, yes, you're correct. It's amendment to the zoning ordinance to create a, a commercial, a CL, we're calling it, commercial lake district. And in there, we would outline and have been drafting an outline for what commercial activities would be appropriate within a certain proximity to the lakeshore. And if I recall correctly, that is up for discussion again at the next planning commission meeting, not quite for action yet, but soon. We're getting close to having a draft that will go through the planning commission for action.
Okay, just making sure we're still moving ahead on it, and it didn't just get on a back burner.
Right, there's a lot going on. Hard to keep track of everything. Is there, there any other old business? Councilman Robey?
Heath, I understand you may have some news on Cherry Creek.
I do, Councilman Robey. I have received a letter back from the Department of the Army, the U.S. Corps of Engineers out of their Omaha District Office, and they are the regulatory office that we submitted an application to in order to do some of the regrading of that channel up off the Cherry Drive area. The city self-named Cherry Creek, or, yeah, Cherry Creek, we've been calling it, although it's an unnamed tributary. So, the news I got back from the Corps are that they did approve our work as proposed on our plans as far as the regrading of that channel. They tucked us in under what they call their nationwide permit. It's kind of like a general permit for construction activities that state and federal agencies have the authority to do. So, the next steps for us are to get with our consultant that helped some of the design work, and get with the developer to coordinate this grading with their grading project. As you recall, the developer to the north had to do some off-site grading off of their property onto the city's property, and we wanted to coordinate these two efforts so that we weren't redundantly grading work out there and performing the same thing twice effectively. So, there's a little bit of coordination work left on that end, and pending the developer's schedule, that's something I want to lean into next. If that seems reasonable, and we can proceed with them and through a development agreement, I would hope to get this rolling here in 2020 construction season. And if for some reason the developer's schedule is pushed way off, we will anticipate going in and doing our own grading project to accomplish these improvements.
All right. Any other old business? Okay, under new business, I will be sending a message out, and the council members will hear about this coming up shortly. We're at a point where we're ready to start the process of approving our comprehensive plan, and it's been a long time since we did a complete rewrite. This isn't just another amendment to our comp plan, it's kind of a big deal. And both the plan commission and the council need to approve this document, and so, there will be one combined council-plan commission meeting where we have a public hearing, and the public's invited to comment, and the council's invited to comment, and plan commission, so we can get it all done in one fell swoop. But prior to that, there will be, you'll be invited to come to the plan commission meeting to see the presentation. And at, at this time, they're planning to, first district will be making the presentation, first meeting in March. So, just be looking for those notices to come out, and it's possible that those dates could change, but I just want that to be on your ra, radar. It's a pretty big deal to adopt a new comp plan. Is there any other new? Is there any other new business? Yes, Councilman Bueller?
Mayor, if I might, will we have, will we be able to see the comprehensive land use plan prior to that meeting?
Actually, I've got a message half-written that I'm going to hit send on tonight to all of you council members with an executive summary of the comp plan and a link to the full document and so that you can have plenty of time to look it over. That's a lot to look through. It's not going to be a, something you can get through in one sitting, so.
During my coffee.
Yeah, several coffees. Any other new business? All right, any liaison member reports? Councilman Vilehauer?
Just an update as those of you that may have been following, we're, the legislative session again is taking up the task of looking at the, the Rural Electric Cooperative and the, you know, territorial issue that does impact Watertown. There is a House bill that's, that has been introduced that in the opinion of our utility people is skewed very heavily in favor of the, of the REAs and there was a, a hearing scheduled for tomorrow morning, but we found out just today that it has been canceled and needs to be rescheduled. I'm not sure what that means when a hearing gets scheduled at that late juncture right before it's supposed to be held. I'm looking at you, Reed, is, can you read anything into that, that, does it mean anything or just a matter of rescheduling it?
I actually think it's good news unofficially. I'm not in the loop, I haven't received any word, but traditionally, if a committee hearing is postponed, it's usually at the request of one of the parties to bring more testimony to come in from out of town.
Okay. So anyway, that is a...
I think, I think it would promote more input from people, making sure that they can make it and of better vetting of the bill. So I don't think it's a bad deal for Watertown.
So when, when that does get rescheduled, if it does get rescheduled, we will get word on that and, you know, the more, the, the better, if we can pack the, the chambers out there when it does come into a hearing?
Yeah, I thought that was unfortunate that it was going to be 7:45 a.m. the morning after a council meeting night for, for us and that would be hard to be there. So I'm kind of relieved that they postponed it. Any other liaison member reports? None? Announcements? I don't have any. Does anybody else have announcements? And we do not have a reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, so I will look for adjournment. We've got a motion by Lallam.
Second?
Second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries and we are adjourned.